I'd like to call the meeting the Montgomery County School Board to order with the pledge of allegiance, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening Board members and members of the audience. The next item on our agenda is adoption of the agenda. I need a motion to adopt the agenda.
Second.
All those in any discussion on the agenda and the agenda items? I think there were two updates that were sent out earlier today adding some content to the agenda, items that are already there.
Can you tell me what those were?
They were, uh, one, bear with me just a second, is update on the facilities planning, capital.
Yes, sir, they were not changed. They're presentations.
Okay, they're presentations. And I do think under new business is the resolution that we have before will be discussed under new business as well. Have a second and a motion, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by staying aye. Aye. Any opposed? We now have an agenda. Next item on our agenda is honors, awards, and recognition, and this is where the board, uh, this is the best part of the meeting in which we get to recognize the outstanding work of our students, our staff, and many members in the community. And at this time, I believe, is it Nelson or who's going to start first?
Lois.
Lois. Okay, alright.
At this time, we will ask Mr. Nelson Simpkins, Director of Secondary Education, to share the seniors of the month presentation.
Good evening, members of the board, members of the audience. Mr. Jones, this is indeed a highlight of our board meeting, the recognition of a senior of the month from each of our four high schools. Their individual photos and leadership profiles are displayed on the school presentation boards in our lobby. Our presentation format provides a snapshot for each of our seniors in their own words of how they view themselves in the highlights of their high school years. Our principals are here with us tonight to share words from each of our November senior recipients. Now, it's my pleasure to recognize, and we'll go alphabetically tonight, Mr. Carl Polly, Principal of Auburn High School. He'll be followed tonight by Ms. Amanda Wadner, Assistant Principal of Blacksburg High School, Dr. Kevin Sears, Principal of Christiansburg High School, and he'll be followed by Mr. Danny Knott, Principal of Eastern Montgomery High School.
Thank you, Mr. Simpkins, members of the board. Ms. Blackburn, it is my pleasure this evening to introduce to you the November Senior of the Month for Auburn High School, Lauren Snyder, and she is here this evening with her mom and dad, Jim and Julie Snyder. If they would come up and join me at the podium. As Mr. Simpkins said, I will tell you a few things about Lauren in Lauren's own words. Lauren thinks that her friends see her mostly as responsible and determined. She added, "I always make sure to get my work done on time, and I am determined to make sure it's done right." She also believes that they would characterize her as loyal and caring since she is always there for them whether they have family problems or need help on math. Lauren has played on the varsity softball team since her sophomore year and has been a valuable part of the program. Lauren said that her experiences in softball have raised her level of confidence in everything she does. She explained that it has been the most meaningful activity she has engaged in because it has given her that level of acceptance that people strive for in high school. Lauren said that the main thing she has developed during these four years of high school is confidence. She said, "I've grown to accept myself as who I am and to strive to be the best person I can be. My school has helped me with this because of the classmates I'm around and the teachers that push you." Lauren said that the most unforgettable experience she's had in high school was definitely planning her senior homecoming float and hallways. While she had a lot of help coming up with ideas, she found that there was a shortage of help when it came time to carry them out. It's a lesson we learn usually when we're a little older. From this experience, she learned that it took a huge amount of leadership and dedication to push through and carry out these homecoming ideas. Ten years from now, Lauren sees herself as a graduate of James Madison University, starting a career in either hospitality or psychology. She said of her time at Auburn High School, "I think that dealing with the classmates and the AP classes have helped prepare me for the future." As you can see, we have accepted, we have nominated Lauren for Senior of the Month for very many good reasons. Lauren, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Good evening, Chairman Jones, Ms. Blackburn, members of the board, and members of the audience. It is a pleasure for me to introduce Blacksburg High School Senior of the Month for November, Ms. Rachel McCoy. Rachel will be escorted tonight by her mother and father, Alicia Cohen and Jim McCoy, and her brother Jacob. And at this time, I'd like to ask all of them to come to the podium. In her own words, Rachel says her friends would characterize her as hardworking, responsible, and caring. She says, "I try to be a good role model and lead by example." Rachel says running has definitely been the most meaningful activity she has participated in during high school. She goes on, "I get to spend time with the most amazing people every day. It has taught me that hard work really does pay off." Rachel says Blacksburg High School has allowed her to improve her organization and time management skills. She says running is a very time-intensive sport, and her teachers don't let that be an excuse, so she has to keep on top of things to meet their standards. Rachel's most unforgettable memory during her high school career was the state cross-country meet earlier this month. After being on the team for five years, she was finally able to contribute to a state championship. She says, "I will never forget how happy everyone was for the girls' and guys' teams." In ten years, Rachel says she would like to have a job that allows her to do something she loves every day. She says, "Blacksburg High School has taught me to embrace challenges and to make the most of every opportunity." Congratulations to Rachel McCoy for being selected as Blacksburg High School Senior of the Month for November. She is an outstanding young woman, very deserving of this honor, and we wish her much success in the future.
Good evening, members of the board and Ms. Blackburn. I'm proud to announce Christiansburg High School Senior of the Month for the month of November, Caleb Caldwell. Caleb is accompanied here today by his parents, Mark and Carrie Caldwell, his brothers, Clay and Ken Caldwell, Ken's girlfriend, Katie Suter, and his grandparents, Kathy and Mark Caldwell, and I would ask that all of them join me up here now. In his own words, Caleb describes his high school experience this way, "My friends would characterize me as a well-rounded kid. I have so many different friends because of all the different things in which I'm involved. My friends are all either involved in or support everything I've done in high school. Choir would be the most meaningful activity for me in my high school career. I discovered it freshman year and it's been stuck with me ever since. It has become my passion and something at which I'm very good. I plan on being involved with music for the rest of my life, and it all started at CHS. I have gained tremendous skills in my choir classes. My teacher, Mrs. Townley, has been amazing. She has taught me so much, and I hope that I can be half the teacher that she is one day. Also, over the past several years, I've become more of a leader among my peers. Clubs and certain classes have helped me develop that confidence. My most unforgettable experience in high school, and this is one I personally thank Caleb for, was winning the 2012 Sheila Motor Mile Talent Show with the $20,000 prize coming to Christiansburg High School. Competing with my best friends, doing something that we all love, was an awesome experience. Winning the talent show was so amazing, and it was then that I really felt like a rock star. Ten years from now, I see myself teaching high school or college choir music and/or being on Broadway in New York City. Music is what I want to do, and with the training I've had and the training that will soon come, I see myself being a serious musician." I really enjoy the Senior of the Month program because it always allows me to find out more information about our spectacular seniors, and I always find out some tidbits and information that are interesting, but they don't always appear in this report, and I would like to share one on Caleb. I found out earlier this week that Caleb doesn't just ask a girl out on a date or ask her to the prom, he proposes to her in a song with a guitar in the cafeteria in front of a room full of his peers. That takes courage that not many of us had in high school, and it's just one attribute, one outstanding attribute of our Senior of the Month, Caleb Caldwell.
Ms. Blackburn, Mr. Jones, members of the board, it's my privilege tonight to introduce to you Eastern Montgomery High School's November Senior of the Month, Ms. Kirsten Doughty. She's accompanied tonight by her father, Brad Doughty. If they'd join me up here, please. These are Kirsten's words, "My friends would say that I'm a hardworking, down-to-earth kind of person. I'm a good listener, and I'm great at giving advice. They would say that I'm caring and compassionate, and that I always seem to give a lot, but never ask for anything in return. The most meaningful activity I've been involved in during high school has to be yobisso. I help speak out against distracted driving. I don't want my friends or myself to become another statistic, so I educate my friends about the importance of seat belts and the dangers of distracted driving. In my school, the number of students who wear their seat belts when they drive or ride in a car has increased since I've been involved in yobisso. This means so much to me because I'm saving lives and helping better the world. One of the most important skills I've developed in high school would be teamwork. My school has helped me develop this skill well because I've had to use teamwork in almost everything I do in school. Schoolwork sometimes needs teamwork. My Knowledge Bowl team requires teamwork, and the sport I love, volleyball, has to have teamwork. Without teamwork, it's hard to get by in high school or life. The most unforgettable experience I've had during high school took place on a school trip. My Knowledge Bowl team went to Disney World. So there we were, all five of us staring at a huge roller coaster that only three of us wanted to ride. I didn't want to sit alone, so I talked to one of my best friends, Lisa, into riding with me. Let's just say that after a lot of screaming, almost hyperventilating, and a ton of laughter, Lisa got over her fear of roller coasters and had a blast on the ride. Ten years from now, I see myself with a degree in psychology or sociology. I see myself working with children and helping them through their problems. I've taken psychology and sociology in school, and that has made me truly decide what I want to do. At present, I'm job shadowing at a daycare center, and that's what made me decide that I wanted to work with children. I wouldn't have had these opportunities or know what I'm going to do with my life if it weren't for Eastmont. Congratulations, Kirsten, we know you're going to do well."
At this time, we'll ask Diane Knapp, Supervisor of the Talented and Gifted Program, to share her next presentation.
Ms. Blackburn, Chairman Jones, members of the board and the audience, I would like Brenda Mash to come forward and her family. Come on down, families. And she has colleagues in the office either from, in the office, in the audience from either Falling Branch, Eastern Montgomery, or her colleagues on the gifted staff, if they could stand as well. Oh, they just gave me that, sorry.
It's my pleasure to present to you today Brenda Mash, and she's receiving the 2012 Region Six Gifted of the Year Award. And when you think about Brenda, Brenda has a love for learning, Brenda's students have a love for learning. She serves the students at Falling Branch and Eastern Montgomery, and when we do that, we serve the teachers and also their families. And when you ask those students what's the best thing about school, they'll say Wednesday or Thursday or Friday because that's the day I get to see Mrs. Mash. So again, Brenda's loved by her schools, her family, her colleagues, and she continues to grow as she's on this staff as well. So I'm very, very pleased that Region Six is honoring her as the 2012 Gifted Teacher of the Year. Brenda Mash.
And now, Ms. Blackburn will present the Virginia School Board Association Awards.
Thank you, Dr. Graham. I don't usually get to do this, but tonight I do, so I look forward to this meeting and the one in the spring when I get to say some things about our board members. And I would again like to tell you what a pleasure it is to serve for this board and for Montgomery County Schools. I learn a lot of things from you all. A few of them I didn't want to know, but mostly I learn things that I do want to know from you. So it's a pleasure for me tonight to honor our board members. You serve tirelessly, and you are the chief cheerleaders and the greatest advocates, not only for our students, but for our employees, and public education. I hear you all say it so many times about the power of public education, and your service to public education makes a difference each and every day. And still, after having to come to all these meetings and after doing all that homework to get ready for the meetings, you still find time to participate in professional development and to try to be a better board member. So I thank you for your dedication to this school system and to public education and to improving yourselves to be the very best board members that you can be. So I get to present certificates to you guys tonight, and I'm going to start out with Mr. Jones and Ms. Woolsey, if you would come forward, and you will be earning a certificate of recognition. And our next level of recognition is our awards of achievement, and this year, those have been earned by Phyllis Albritton and Penny Franklin. If you'd please come down and let me present you with your certificate. Our Award of Excellence for Jamie Bond. Jamie. And then we also had an Award of Honor for Joe Ivors, and Joe is visiting family already, starting his Thanksgiving a little bit early, so we will make sure that he gets it. Again, I thank you so much for what you do for Montgomery County schoolchildren, schools, community, and employees. Thank you.
Now, we have one last award that we must recognize, and this one is for Ms. Blackburn. She also participates in many hours of professional development, many hours of prep, always prepared, and we'd like to thank you for your tireless support and dedication to public education. Thank you very much.
We will take a short break at this time and reconvene at five minutes before eight and give our school board members time to congratulate all the award winners. Thank you. Thank you.
First warning hammer?
Yeah.
Let's call the meeting back to order, please. Next item on our agenda is public address, and this is where the board sets aside thirty minutes with a maximum of three minutes per citizen to address the board on items of educational interest. And do we have anyone signed up at this time?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I see it right. I apologize, I see it right here. We do have one person signed up, and that person is Brad Hill. If you'll come forward, state your name and address, please.
My name is Brad Hill. I live at thirty-eight fifty-five Eagle Country Drive in Rhineburg, Virginia, and I'm here to talk about the budget. I appreciate you having the meeting last Monday, but I needed a little bit more than two minutes, so that's why I wanted to wait till tonight, plus I wanted to hear what others had to say. I'm going to do my budget talk in twofold. First, I'm going to deal with revenue, and then I'm going to deal with cuts. One thing I did hear, and I'm sure you all heard last week as well, was of the sixty-plus speakers that spoke, just about every single one of them, not all of them, really dealt with things that directly affected the education of children, whether it be safety, closing of schools which affect class sizes, et cetera. Everything directly affected the education of children. So I'm going to use that as my theme. First of all, when it comes to revenue, for those of you that do not know, I have been a coach in this county and I've taught in this county, so I know how important sports are in this county and the effect that it has, the positive effect it has on kids. However, I am not against pay-to-play. I am against pay-to-play for a hundred dollars per child. I think that is extreme. But Augusta County showed that if they did, if you charge twenty-five dollars to start out, it isn't too hard. Plus, I already have pay-to-play. I pay for rec league sports, and I'm used to that, and I think families would be used to that. And if it takes pay-to-play to help save middle school sports, I'm a hundred percent for that. The other thing as far as revenue that I'm, I want to address is as far as possibly charging for busing. I know that may not be popular either, but I know that they do that at Radford City. And one thing that I looked at was there are approximately eight thousand students that are from elementary to middle school. If you take seventy-five percent of them say ride buses, which would be about six thousand students, at a hundred and eighty days, at twenty-five cents per day, which only equates to a dollar twenty-five a week per child, that equates to two-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars. That's money we can use. So even if it's not twenty-five cents, maybe, you know, ten cents or fifteen cents. As far as cuts, I'm going to say something that's going to be tough. I love Walt Shannon. He's getting ready to leave. We have an assistant superintendent job that is going to be coming available. You've asked teachers, you've asked assistant principals, principals to take on added responsibilities. Maybe if we save that money and use that, have people in central office absorb that, that could save us a hundred thousand-plus dollars. It's not popular, I know, but maybe we can lead by example. Another is vehicles. Whether they be personal or school-related vehicles, maybe we could use those to help save us some money as well. There are other ideas that I've had-
Mr. Hill, your three minutes is up.
Okay, thank you. I knew I needed more than that.
That concludes all that have signed up in advance. At this time, I will open it up to the audience, and if anybody would like to address this board at this time, please step forward, state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Connie Froggett. I reside at seventeen fifty-one Brush Mountain Creek Road in Montgomery County. I did not plan to be here tonight. I normally have a prepared speech, but my husband had surgery today and my daughter's having surgery tomorrow, but this was too important to not say. I want to speak to the resolution that's been passed by the Board of Supervisors. First, I want to thank Mr. Barrinato, because from what I've seen, you're going to get a very thorough presentation on the history of maintenance on our schools in this county, and I think that history shows a well-planned, well-thought-out, deliberate plan for maintaining our schools, given the budget you've had for the past five years. You have done, I think, what the best you can do to maintain our schools. In particular, I know Ms. Blackburn has pushed to get our roofs repaired, and as we know in Blacksburg, if you don't have a roof, you don't have a school. So I want to, first of all, tell you, I support your priority list. I think you've done a great job with years of inspections and well-thought-out planning to come to that list. I do not understand how the Board of Supervisors could sit there and say they weren't aware of this list. I went back and reviewed your joint session in September, and I know Ms. Blackburn and at least two of you spoke to that list and several of the items that were mentioned the other night. So I'm just floored by the fact that they could even say that. But most importantly, I feel like the Board of Supervisors way overstepped their bounds. There's been sort of an agreement between you guys. I don't know if it's legal, if it's unwritten, but you guys are the authority on appropriating funds. Granted, they have to give you the funds, but you are the knowledgeable authority that should make those decisions. Now, I'm not saying you want to turn down four-hundred-thousand dollars, but I think you need to go back to them and say, "Look, we have a plan. We know what we're doing." And their little impulse buying the other night, I think you need to think twice about that and tell them that you certainly want to accept that four-hundred-thousand dollars, but it needs to go to the items that you have studied and prioritized and have decided this school system needs. But most importantly, I just want to state that I don't see, that there was an implication of a history of neglect here, and I think the only neglect has been in the funding of our school systems. And if they want to give us money, then they need to step up, and they need to give our teachers a raise, they need to support our VRS, they need to fix our schools, and they need to do all the things you're asking them to do, not a four-hundred-thousand-dollar Band-Aid for a multimillion-dollar problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board at this time? If so, step forward, state your name and address. Scene no one, public address is now closed. Next item on our agenda is the employee group presentations, and at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Blackburn.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. As you know, we are beginning the budget process very early this year, and to support the board's future discussion, I have invited our employee groups tonight to make their presentations. Usually, we don't do these presentations until the first public hearing. We're going to be starting this evening with a representative for our administrative assistants, and it will be Lori Wall. Lori?
Good evening. During this season of Thanksgiving, we want to share our appreciation with the school board members and administration for their efforts on behalf of Montgomery County Public Schools employees during these challenging budget times. Some issues that administrative assistants would like the school board to consider during this budget session for school year two thousand thirteen fourteen are: to keep the single-subscriber insurance intact and make no more adjustments to the insurance offered by MCPS employees for school year two thousand thirteen fourteen; to make every effort to maintain the current positions in the school system; and to consider a cost-of-living increase for all employees in case funds become available for this purpose. Although we recognize the budget challenges, this is a critical need in order to retain current administrative assistants and recruit future administrative assistants. On another note, as an administrative assistant in schools for over sixteen years, I would like to address an inequity. On a daily basis, bus drivers, cafeteria workers, ISS aides, and instructional assistants work closely with our students. For many of these employees, much of the school day is spent in direct contact with these students. Being the ones on the front line, they are exposed to multiple illnesses, the common colds, strep, stomach flu, and are the ones most likely ones to be sick first. However, they receive only five sick leave days and only one personal leave day. It can be financially devastating if they take leave without pay. When working on the budget, please consider allowing these employees to have the same number of sick leave and personal leave days as other county employees. We are fortunate to be offered these benefits, and those wonderful people who work with and love our children and are part of our school family deserve the same.
And Morgan has this something.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Next, we will have our maintenance and custodial employees, and they'll be represented tonight by Robbie Jones and Earl Brown.
Hi, Earl got here a little late, so it's just going to be myself. I'm Robbie Jones. I reside at nine-nine-six Cole Holler Road in Christiansburg, Virginia. Madam, school board, Ms. Blackburn, members of the school board, I want to thank you for your past support and future support. I'm here tonight, I wore many hats, I don't know if you know. First and foremost, I'm a custodian for the school system, as well as a custodial representative to the superintendent on her advisory committee and vice president, president of the Montgomery County Education Association. I'm here tonight representing the dedicated Montgomery County Public School custodians, many of whom go above and beyond without hesitation to make sure our buildings run smoothly. These custodians are struggling, struggling to make ends meet. They, like you, have tough decisions to make, different but still tough. Decisions like, do I have enough money for gas this month to get to work? What groceries can I do without? What bills can wait another month? How long can the kids go without new shoes or clothes? And I think I can get a few more miles out of my shoes. And we do have Christmas coming around the corner. With only a one percent salary increase since two thousand and eight, and the cost of living increasing about nine percent in the last three years, these dedicated employees are working with a pay cut. Keep in mind, we do not get a discount on groceries, gas, or break on our taxes. Many custodians are exhausted. They're working two jobs just to try to make ends meet, and due to the second job, they're not spending time with their families. And this is a domino effect that I think needs to be addressed. And that's all I have to say. I think that's a very important subject that I think needs to be touched on. Thank you for your time and for listening.
Thank you, Robbie. Next, we'll have our instructional aides represented by Connie Blose. I hope I didn't-
You got it, Mike.
Okay, good. Thank you very much. We're glad to have you tonight, Connie.
Thank you. Good evening, and my name is Connie Blose, and I live at twenty-seven-ten Mall Oliver Road, Blaski, Virginia. I've been a paraeducator for eleven years, and the last six I've been in Montgomery County. I've worked with special needs kids off and on for thirty years. I started at the age of ten. Once again, we know that the budget is a big concern to everyone. We also know that a pay increase may be impossible once again. We do not ask a lot, but we are asking that you give us two more sick days. In checking the area school systems from Roanoke South to the Tennessee-Virginia state line yesterday, I found out paraeducators in these areas are getting ten sick days and anywhere from two to three personal days, depending on years of experience. Each year, we work harder doing our jobs and have more responsibility coming our way because of state and federal government mandates or new laws. Yet, we do not receive any type of increase of anything. We ask you to look closely and bring in Montgomery County paraeducators up to standards to our counterparts in other school districts. Please make it that we are no longer at the bottom of the stack. Thank you all for all your hard work you do each day to help us in the education system. Without the school board, we could not do our jobs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Connie. Next, we have our food services and school nutrition program employees represented by Michael Marcinelli. Michael?
Ms. Blackburn, Mr. Jones, members of the board, happy Thanksgiving to you. I am here as a representative for my department, the School Nutrition Programs Department. I'm here because I have no employees that wish to come before you and ask for anything. As you all know, we are, as, if my memory serves me, we may be the only department that is totally self-supporting, and so we are not asking for anything from the county school budget process, but we do support any increases that you are willing to make on behalf of my employees. As the supervisor of the department, I commit that we will generate the funds necessary to provide the benefits that you prove worthy of our school employees, whether they're schoolteachers, custodians, everyone that works for the school. So we are here to support any increases that you may consider hourly for employees, and, and, and commit that we will generate the funds necessary to cover our side of it. Thank you for your time, and I am always available for any questions if there are any in the future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, Michael. Our next group this evening will be our transportation and bus drivers, and they are represented tonight by Rebecca Muma and Laura Willis.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Unlike Michael, I have people that probably want to talk, but for the first time in the thirteen years I've been here, I've decided that it's a critical time when I need to speak myself so that I can make sure that you hear the problems that I'm beginning to have. And I have my notes, and I need my glasses, sorry. Last year, you heard from the shop foreman about the cost to maintain our school buses and the need to keep a replacement schedule. He reminded us that in the days back when I first came even in ninety-nine, we had buses breaking down, and when we would take a bus, it wasn't long sometimes before that bus broke down before we could finish the route. We're okay right now, but we're kind of headed down that road again if we don't keep a bus replacement schedule. To add to the problem, I doubt if you realize that every day, I mean, each day of the school year, we go back and forth six hundred miles on our buses to shuttle back and forth to Blacksburg. Six hundred miles we're adding every single day to that group of buses, and that's nobody's fault, but that's happening, and it's wearing our buses out. Now, what I'm really here concerned about tonight is recruitment and retention of school bus drivers. About fifteen years ago, the school board decided to give part-time employees an incentive benefit in lieu of health insurance and VRS, and that incentive has been just that, incentive to keep our people employed and not go elsewhere. It's been, it was designed to purchase health insurance, or life, or some retirement, or whatever they could do with it, even though it's not enough for all three. They've been extremely grateful for that benefit through the years. But last year, it seemed to be kind of on the cutting board, and it did get cut a little by one year, and we're beginning to worry about that being cut some more. That, many, many counties, I'm going to give you a little handout, I've done some research on this, are doing VRS and health insurance for all their part-time employees, just like their schoolteachers or whoever else gets. And so our part-time incentive costs much, much less than that, about half as much. I think it costs about, for a school bus driver, it'd be about ninety-seven, eighty annually for medical and VRS. That's a lot of money, but we, we don't have near that much. Our employees get on the bus every day, over four hours, in a very enclosed space with a lot of children, and they get all those things those kids have, and they get sick and they drive sick, because many of them cannot even afford to go to the doctor. So that is very much of a concern. Since school started, I have lost five drivers to jobs that offer benefits, five, just since school started. Most of them have said they need their benefits now, they can't keep waiting. There, there are people still on the first-year scale that have been here, this is their fifth year, and that, again, we all know we have budget problems, but people are restless. I put a bus in front of technology with a sign on it to recruit drivers. I had four applications, that's all. Times are critical for us to find people who want to do these jobs. It costs us over a thousand dollars to train a new driver. We, we have at least fifty hours of classroom and behind-the-wheel training in addition to the physical, drug test, training materials, expenses for the driver trainer, and fuel, and beyond that, an experienced driver is so important over a brand-new driver, that that is where our children's safety is involved. And so keeping these valuable employees, it's very important to me, and I'm sure it is to all the parents in Montgomery County as well. This is a touchy subject I want to go ahead and bring up. There's been a lot of talk about privatizing school busing, as well as other departments. For school buses, our neighboring county, that's the only county in our city or locality in Virginia that's doing this, they now, these bus drivers, since this has happened, have no sick leave, no personal leave, no health insurance, no retirement, and very low wages. And yet, the increase went up by one point three million dollars in the first two years. That's in the DOE Annual School Report. Ours decreased by seven hundred and eight thousand dollars because we've been working diligently to cut our costs, and that's by about five percent. Our ridership is almost the same as theirs. So I do want to bring that up to let you know how hard we are trying to do what we can to keep our costs down. We do expect a decrease in our operating cost again this year. Our budget was reduced by fifty thousand dollars, and to meet that, you've supported the increase in walk-to-stop distances, and I was actually able to cut two bus routes with that. And that, with the bus routes, with the cost of the fuel, the wages, the reduced idling time, fifty thousand dollars is attainable with those two routes. I'm about at the bare bones now, but that was fifty thousand dollars. but that was fifty thousand dollars that we didn't have before. Um, in addition, we're teaching our drivers fuel-saving, uh, uh, conservation methods, um, letting them know and memos and whatever, helping us do what we can. Assuming Blacksburg High School opens on schedule this fall, I expect that eliminating the commute back and forth to Christiansburg will save at least eighty-five thousand dollars in fuel, driver wages, reduced maintenance costs, and a lot of wear and tear on our buses. So, I probably want that just as much as the rest of you do. Ladies and gentlemen, we are saving money wherever we can and I'm respectfully asking you not to consider making any reductions in our part-time employees' wages and benefits to balance the budget this year. Thank you for your time. I now want to introduce Laura Wills, one of my prized bus drivers, one of many.
Laura? Thank you, Ms. Mumma. Um, good evening, Ms. Blackburn and members of the board. And, um, my name is Laura Wills and this is my eighth year being a bus driver in Montgomery County. Um, I'm here tonight to represent, uh, my fellow bus drivers and bus attendants. Um, I'm very proud of what I do. It's so neat to walk in a store and see some of my kids that ride my bus and they come running and, you know, that, that is just very gratifying to me. Um, it's not a glorious job, it's not a high-paying job, but I have a lot of pride in what I do. Um, I want to thank you for your support that you've given our department in the past years. And as you go through your difficult budget process this year, we ask that you please consider the following. First, if there is a step increase or salary increase of any kind given to school employees, we ask that it be given across the board and that all employees be included. We realize you're facing terrible, terrible budget crisis and it doesn't give you many options, but we need, but we too are facing a crisis because of our cost of living and with such small salaries, it becomes increasingly difficult to make ends meet. Second, we ask that you please continue to fund the part-time employee benefit. We've had it for the past fifteen years. This plan is extremely important to us. Without it, I'm afraid that many of our experienced drivers will be forced to find other employment. Just like Ms. Mumma said, I know from the time that I started driving until now, I think back and, and I even told Eddie one day, "This, this isn't for me. This isn't for me" because I just didn't have that experience yet. And, once you get several years behind you, it makes your job much more enjoyable and it makes our kids a lot more safe. Um, many of our surrounding counties give their drivers and attendants the same benefits as their employees and that does cost a lot more than our incentive plan as Ms. Mumma said. The amount we receive won't cover health and health benefits, let alone retirement. With no step increases and minimal raises to speak of, many have been forced to use this money that we get as an incentive pay just to try and make ends meet. Since the beginning of this school year, we have lost five quality bus drivers, drivers that have had, had experience. Um, and let's face it, we don't have people lining up wanting to be a school bus driver. Um, and that, that's scary, you know? We, we need quality drivers and, and we need some type of incentive to bring them in. Um, also, drivers that drive on trips have already taken a cut due to the budget decrease for field trips. Um, that's something that a lot of people haven't thought about, but field trips have been cut way back. We have a driver that said from January of this year to November, he's already made a thousand dollars less than he made this time last year. That's a big cut. If the incentive plan is done away with, it would without a doubt be extremely detrimental to the Transportation Department. Many drivers, including myself, would be forced to seek other work. It would also make our job a lot less appealing to those seeking work. I'm thankful for my job, I love the kids on my bus, and I'm proud of what I do. I hope to continue driving a Montgomery County school bus for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you Laura and Rebecca. Give them to Brenda. Thanks. Our next group will be our Technology Department and they will be represented tonight by Chad Hall.
Good evening, members of the board, superintendent and fellow employees. I'm here to represent the support staff members of the Technology Department. Our department has endured these past years with no significant pay raise, no additional staffing since nineteen ninety-eight, and increased costs for employee benefits. Despite these circumstances, we have continued to maintain current technology equipment, implement and install new technologies, relocate the central office personnel, execute required state and federal reporting, and manage the various technology issues in all of our construction projects. The desire of our department would be to have an increase in employee compensation, maintain current benefits, and increase our staff. The upcoming new construction deadlines at Blacksburg High School and Auburn High School, removing technology equipment from the old Auburn High School, relocation of BMS, ISS, and the required maintenance at other district schools looms as an extremely daunting task for our department. That is why we ask for your support and understanding. Thank you.
Thanks Chad. Our next group this evening will be our, uh, MCPA which is represented tonight by Galene Woodsetzer and Rick Weaver. No Galene?
Galene's out of town, so I'm all you get.
Okay. Welcome Rick.
John suggested I sing my message to you, but since he wouldn't join me up here, I'm gonna spare you. Good evening. Thank you, Mrs. Blackburn, Mr. Jones, and board members for beginning this budget cycle early. We all realize how important it is for members of the school community to be informed and engaged in this process. I am representing the Montgomery County Principals Association. The members include principals, assistant principals, and instructional supervisors. We are intimately involved in the daily operation of our schools as we hire, supervise, mentor, evaluate, coach, and counsel both instructional and support staff. Normally, I would be standing here as I have many times in the past, asking for a pay raise or increased benefits or some other benefit for my members. Even though we need those things for our personal well-being, that's not the, that's not my message tonight. Instead, I am going to ask you to avoid additional cuts to personnel or benefits and move towards solving the problems that four years of cuts have created. When MCPA members were asked to provide input on tonight's presentation, it was very clear that they see a school system in stress. Each principal or supervisor expressed his or own stressor, but there was a common thread. Our members and the staff that they work with are under stress because of multiple years of staff reductions, frozen salaries, and reduced purchasing power. We continue to do more with less. We are here tonight to ask you to support public education in Montgomery County by supporting the MCPS employees who make it happen every day. It takes people. Hard-working teachers in the classroom, working with students, supervisors and principals providing support and direction for effective instruction, instructional, technical, and facility support personnel maintaining an effective environment. It takes people. People who are paid a competitive wage with reasonable benefits and people who don't have to bring their personal stress to work with them. To that end, please do everything that you can to avoid further cuts to personnel and benefits. Let's work together to stop the flood of declining budgets and to insist that schools are adequately funded, whatever it takes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks Rick. Our last group this evening will be our MCEA represented tonight by Kelly Pleasant and Carol Fox.
Good evening Chairman Jones, Ms. Blackburn, members of the board. I am Kelly Pleasant. I'm the president of the Montgomery County Education Association. The MCEA and as well as the other employee groups tonight, thank you for the opportunity to speak on this budget on such an early date. We appreciate all of your hard work and your continued support for all employees, all students, and public education in Montgomery County. Speaking for us this evening will be Andrea Langston and Carol Fox, who are co-chairs of the MCEA Compensation Committee this year.
Thank you Kelly. Good evening. Now is the time for all stakeholders in Montgomery County to stand shoulder to shoulder and make the investment necessary to ensure the continued success of all members of our community, including the business owners who hire our well-qualified graduates, the parents who trust Montgomery County Public Schools to properly and lovingly educate our most precious assets, the students who depend on us to provide them a high-quality education, and the hundreds of dedicated professionals and support staff members of Montgomery County Public Schools who on a daily basis strive to put students first.
In order to maintain a quality education for all students in our community, MCEA understands that there are issues that require immediate solutions. Number one, protect the current levels of compensation for MCPS employees. No employee should receive a reduced salary as we have for the last three years for the work we do with the schoolchildren of Montgomery County. This is, this includes any changes to our fully-funded, single-subscriber health insurance. The compromises employees have made in recent years are tantamount to a pay cut. With a lack of professional and competitive salaries, health benefits must remain untouched in order to retain and recruit quality educators. Number two, not only can we not afford the loss of any more employees due to attrition, reinstating positions previously lost must be a priority. Increased class sizes, as experienced this year, are detrimental to a quality education for our students. We know class size matters.
Number three, there must be a plan to reinstate and honor the accuracy of the experience-driven salary scales. This longstanding plan for employee compensation has been corrupted by years of frozen salaries and inequitable hiring practices. Number four, the MCEA believes that all school employees should be on the salary scale commensurate with their years of experience. Sadly, we recognize the economic barriers to immediately rectify this injustice. But in what respected profession would employees be continually asked to shoulder a greater workload without increased compensation? The MCEA proposes a four percent salary increase in addition to the increase required to offset VRS contributions. The VEA is actively lobbying the state to pay its share of that amount.
As the budget year progresses, we will present more specific information on compensation issues. If there are any questions about these compensation priorities, we will be glad to answer them at this time. And I would like to point out that in the back of the little booklet that we passed out would be the benchmark comparisons for the state. And, um, specifically, I'd like you to notice that Montgomery County is a hundred and eleven out of a hundred and thirty on this benchmark comparisons for our state. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thanks Carol, Andrea, and Kelly. We appreciate your comments tonight.
I'd like to thank each of our employee groups for their comments tonight. I'm constantly reminded that the energy and the success of this organization is based on our outstanding employees. Thanks for all that you do for our students and to make Montgomery County a great place to learn and to live. Thank you again.
Next item on our agenda is consent items. Is there any items that anyone would like to pull under consent and discuss? Hearing none, all items are approved on consent. The next item on our agenda is the Personnel Report. I need a motion to approve the Personnel Report. Any discussion on the Personnel Report? Phillips?
Penn.
I, I moved it.
We're good?
We're good.
Not a problem, not a problem. No discussion, all those in favor signify by stating ahh, ahh. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the Payment of the Bills. I need a motion to pay the bills.
I do move we pay the bills.
Any discussion on the bills? All those in favor signify by stating ahh, ahh. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is the Approval of the Financial Summary Report. Need a motion to approve?
So move.
Any discussion on the financial summary? All those in favor signify by stating ahh, ahh. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the Superintendent's Reports, Recommendations, and Announcements. Ms. Blackburn?
Thank you, Mr. Jones. So, we're back with the Student Code of Conduct and, um, we've been working actually on trying to come up with a policy that would meet the board's needs to address our first offenders for drug and alcohol offenses in a different way, uh, perhaps, uh, greater consequences than we are currently doing. At the last meeting, there was a lot of discussion about this policy and unfortunately, we were not able to reach agreement. After the meeting, I tried to follow up and spoke with at least three board members, trying to see if I could find a thread that would allow me to bring you a policy that I thought we could reach consensus on or that we could at least get four votes on. And unfortunately, I didn't get clarity even in those conversations outside the board, uh, room. So, I regret that I was unable to bring you a policy that looked different than the policy that you saw at the previous meeting. I chose instead to take a little different tact and I created a chart that would try to show that this really is a progressive way of dealing with the, uh, drug and alcohol offenders. And I've showed you in the chart what we currently do with first offenders and you can see that it's basically a five to ten-day suspension based on whether that student is in a block-scheduled school or a regular, traditionally scheduled school. Then you see in the second column, a set of, uh, very prescribed, um, interventions for students that include a very specified number of counseling sessions. They include at least three, uh, opportunities in the engagement of parents. It includes a close monitoring by the school administration. And then finally, you see, uh, what happens with students who are either second offenders or who have a, a different kind of drug offense. And actually, the biggest difference there is that those students are not allowed to attend school. And although they're out for an extended period of time, they don't really have any monitoring or support provided by the school system. And, um, so, it's two very different kinds of, uh, consequences, but yet if you look at them, they are progressive in nature. And, um, so, I'm bringing you the same policy back. I, I was unable to find a way to find the middle ground and I would suggest that the board give this some consideration for a trial. Um, if we tried it during the second semester, if it didn't meet the board's needs, we would have an opportunity to revisit it again in the spring when we look at policies. Uh, also, I think one of the, uh, really, um, probably one of the toughest pieces of the plan that I have presented to you for first offenders is that if they don't meet every single piece of that, uh, set of consequences, they're gonna come to you anyway. And then you have the option to do whatever you choose, whether it be expulsion or whether it be, you know, some other level of tiered, uh, interventions with those students. So, I've given you my best effort and at that, I'll turn it over to you all.
Board members, in the interest of time, would we like to make a motion so we can enter into discussion on it? Because this is for action?
Make a motion that we approve the, um, policy as submitted.
Make a motion that we approve the policy as submitted.
Second.
Okay. We now have a motion, and we have a second, and I'll bring it up for discussion. Board members? Board members, any comments as presented?
Okay. Well, my motion was, so we could get to discussion as you asked. I still believe that there's not enough teeth behind it, but I've been pushing for several years for something. So I'm willing tonight to vote to approve this so that we can see how it works. And then if I'm not happy, I'll come back and I'll say, we need to revisit. But I'm ready to, you know, move forward with what we have and see how it works. I still don't believe it's, you know, as meaty as I'd like it to be, but let's do something.
Board members, any other comments?
I agree. I think it's worth the work that's been put in, and I think we owe it to give it a chance to see how it's going to work because it's a lot more than we've had.
I think the chart, the format of the chart helps too.
Yeah.
Yes.
I, like Ms. Franklin, would like to see some, you know, they can't have extracurricular activities for X number of days, but, you know, we'll give it a try. Brenda will have a policy that she's been waiting on for several months now, and we'll give it a try, and hopefully it'll give the results that we're looking for.
And, you know, as I stated in the last meeting, one of the things that I commented on was making sure we had to correct parental input and correct parental involvement because basically what we see during our expulsion cases is making sure that the parents are involved and understand the significant impact that the disruption of a child's behavior in the school environment has. I think it's, in some cases, it's been very eye-opening for parents. I think it needs to continue to be eye-opening for parents. And like Ms. Franklin, I wanted to have some teeth to it. I wanted to make sure that it's more than just a five-to-ten-day vacation at home playing the video games or watching TV or whatever it may be. And I agree with Ms. Foster that the chart's very helpful. And for those reasons and the fact that I will like to give it a try, and let's move forward, and if we see that it's not working and needs to be fine-tuned, we have the ability to bring it back and forth. We also have the ability, if we do see these, the children that do not complete this, we have the ability to take the proper action at that time. So I will be voting in support of this tonight.
And is it my understanding, Ms. Blackburn, that these students would be attending Phoenix? Is that...
Yes, in general, they would be attending Phoenix unless there were some very specific reason that they would not.
Okay. And for that reason, my recommendation of community service, I still think it would be good, but I'm willing to vote this positively at this time and see how we do. Because I do know, I've heard, talked to a couple principals, they thought community service would be helpful as well, but at this point, wanting to move on with this, see how it goes. And I agree with Wendell as far as rental involvement. And that's the biggie at this point. And I appreciate seeing it laid out like this.
Any further discussion or comments? We have this on here as a first reading, but I'd like to waive that. Is everybody comfortable with that? And...
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. Okay. Typo, okay. All right. Okay. Since this is policy, I'm going to ask for roll call. Okay?
Aye.
Yes.
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 Thank you very much.
But could we ask for, will we hear a report on this? We won't be seeing the students, but I'd like to have a report in a couple of months or...
We will gather the data, and the ones that you would see would be the ones who were unsuccessful in following through with the program. But yes, we will gather the data and share it with you.
Right. I mean, I don't, I hope we don't see any students, so I'd like to have a feedback on how it's going, especially with regard to parental involvement and counseling sessions. Not what's going on, but are people coming to them? Is it working? That kind of thing. Does that make sense?
I'd also like to say, with the teeth being put into it, if they don't succeed, which hopefully that's not the case, that's when you can put your teeth into it in co-session. And I just make that reminder because I think that's something everybody needs to remember.
Thank you. Appreciate that, Jamie.
Thank you very much. Our next item is a budget update and priorities. And I have several things that are at your place that I'll mention as I speak briefly about tonight's budget update. We are continuing to work through a process of full budget review and engagement with the public. On Monday, November 12th, the public forum was held to allow public comment on educational priorities and to suggest possible new ideas for cost containment or reduction. It was an excellent turnout. My estimate is 300 or so folks who joined us on that Monday evening at CHS auditorium. And the speakers shared a variety of thoughts on the issues of educational priorities and possible reduction measures. I was so pleased with the way in which our participants were so respectful of each other. And there were people who had very different opinions about how to approach the situation that we're in, but yet they were respectful, and the board was able to hear each and everyone who wanted to speak. In addition to the speakers, who were numbered in excess of 60, we had over 130 written comments that were submitted at the end of the evening. And I've provided the raw data from these comments this evening at your places on the dais. We have not yet done any analysis. They were just finished late yesterday afternoon, but we will do so prior to the next board meeting and provide you some analysis. But in the meantime, you do have the raw data that you can peruse at your leisure. I thought you would want this information as early as possible because it was such an important gathering, I think, of our community members. The comments that I've shared with you will also be posted on the website next week. In addition, I've also provided you with a revised listing of the potential board member priorities that we talked about at a previous meeting, and the focus areas that the board would consider for possible cost savings or budget reductions. And this document will also be posted on the website next week. Four members of the board attended the VSBA conference this past week and had an opportunity to network with other boards around the state about the budget, and to also get information from VSBA lobbyists as well as from some members of the governor's staff. I remain very concerned about the budget outlook.
Yes and no.
Also, Mr. Jones, Ms. Albritton, Mr. Ivors, and I met with delegates Yost and Rush last week to talk about the concerns for Montgomery County Public Schools and for education in general in Virginia. I'll continue to follow very closely all the information coming out of Richmond. We will know more about the climate enrichment, the political climate enrichment, and the potential for actual dollars available for Montgomery County Public Schools in December. My staff and I are continuing to work on several studies that were authorized by the board during last year's budget cycle, and we will have information to share at the first meeting in December about the outcomes from our budget studies. That's my update at this point. I'm happy to entertain any questions that you may have. Largely, I have provided you with hard copies of the information summary from the public input, and also a revised and cleaned-up copy of my discussions with you all about priorities.
Board members, any comments, questions for the superintendent?
I appreciate you giving us all those comments. It's really good. You can study them. Thanks.
Hearing none? Okay.
Our next agenda item is our monthly update on our capital projects, and I'd ask Curtis Elswich if he would come to the podium and tell us a little bit about what's happening at the new BHS, the new AHS, and the new AMS. Welcome, Curtis.
Thank you, ma'am. Good morning. I mean, good evening. It's been a long day. I will try to be brief. I know folks want to get out here tonight. But progress is going well on all the schools, and I like to tell the story with pictures, so move through those. I'll start out with Auburn High School. This photo was the last aerial shot that we had of the school, which was about three weeks ago. If you've been by the site lately, you've seen it's changed a lot since then. But you can see, kind of on the right, you can see that the roof is on the main gym and the auxiliary gym, along with the light monitors. The, also, the roof is on the auditorium and mechanical room. And the roof, if you go by any time now, you'll see that the metal roof is going on the classroom wing. This was on your left of the photo. Top of the page, you can see the, or the top of the slide, you can see the softball field and the area for the tennis courts. Since this photo, the asphalt has been poured on the tennis courts, and the asphalt paths have been placed for the, up to the softball field, so that work is pretty much complete. You can start to see how the bus route has taken place there at the bottom of the photo, and overall progress as well, and they're staying on schedule. Some more photos of Auburn High School. On your left is the classroom wing of the building. The brick work is actually complete on the east and west sides of the building, as you see there. And window frames are going in, and window glass will be going in the windows here real soon. And on your right is the main stairs. You're entering into the classroom wing, going from the first floor to the second floor. You can see the stair there and all the light that'll be shining in through the classroom wing when the work is finished. On the Blacksburg High School, this is about three weeks ago also. This photo actually shows the new entrance road coming into the school, which has been rough graded. Also, off to the left of the road there, you can see the baseball, softball fields starting, are being rough graded as well. To the right of the new school is the, where the multipurpose fields are, which if you go out there, there's actually grass growing. You just can't see it because it's really short right now. And as for the building, the classroom wing, which is at the bottom of the slide, is actually dried in. The roof is on, the windows are in. They are actually starting on drywall, which I'll show you a picture in a second. And then on the, the roof is actually going in on the gyms right now, the metal roof, if you go by the site. And what you don't see in this photograph, which actually they finished pouring all the slabs for the cafeteria and the administrative areas, which are in between those two buildings. That finished up today, so if you go by next week, you'll start seeing the metal columns going up for, so they can start putting the roof structure on for those areas as well. You can see drywall's going up. This is the third floor of the classroom wing. Drywall's actually been taped and finished. The ceiling grid is going in. Mechanical, electrical, plumbing work continues. And on the right, you'll see the classroom wing from the exterior. You can see the windows have been placed in the building, and work around the site continues there. Other things going on, the Auburn Middle School project is actually out for bid. We expect to get pricing on that around mid-December, so about a month from now. We should know what the bids come in on the middle school. Montgomery County Schools continues with FFNE and technology procurement planning, and those processes going early, which is great. And we actually received the proposals on the greenhouses for the schools yesterday. Montgomery County did. I believe they've received two proposals, and so at some point soon, hopefully, they will award that package. Good news is, we've received schedules in the last few weeks and updates. We've analyzed those, and the projects are tracking on schedule to be complete on time. I have included the actual dates for substantial completion at the bottom. So Auburn High School and Blacksburg High School finish next July, or at least the academic wing and some of the administrative areas of Blacksburg High School. A few weeks after that, the remainder of Blacksburg High School will finish, which will be the gyms and the auditorium and the other administrative areas. And then the middle school is a year out from that in August 2014. Any questions?
Do you have a gut feel how the bids for AMS are going to come back?
Well, some other school systems got some bids in on some larger school projects lately, which were very favorable. The market seems to be pretty good. I don't think it's going to last much longer, but we're not sure yet. We're crossing our fingers. They'll be better than last time because they'll start, you know, it's not so far out. There's not as much contingency in the bids.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Is this the scheduled timing that you've had all along for completion?
Yes, ma'am.
So as far as getting students and everything back into the new, or getting them into the new buildings out of where we are now? Ms. Blackburn, we're on schedule? I mean, in one schedule, so to speak?
We're on schedule, but from day one, the Blacksburg project has been in two phases. It was substantial completion of the classroom building in mid-July. We made that the priority. And the substantial completion of the other ancillary support areas, not until mid-August. And really and truly, we need all of it to conduct school.
In new, in good weather? No bad weather?
No bad weather. That's really important.
And no vacations next summer?
I already know that. I marked off my calendar.
Any other questions?
Thanks, Curtis.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Have a good next evening.
Our next agenda item tonight is our regular monthly facilities update, just the going zone of our Montgomery County Public Schools facilities. Tonight, however, I requested that Mr. Berenado do a couple of extra things in his presentation, and that is that he would include some of the information that was shared in a joint meeting with the Board of Supervisors about facilities. And that joint meeting with the Board of Supervisors was held on September 27, 2012. And I added, asked Dan to add these things to his presentation specifically because of some recent discussion of MCPS facilities, especially Christiansburg High School, at a Board of Supervisors meeting. As I was not in attendance at that meeting, I was at the VASS VSBA conference with our board. I did watch the video of the meeting that was held on November 14th. And I also went back and watched the video of our September 27 joint meeting to confirm that we had at that joint meeting established a course of action regarding future facility needs. And at the end of the facilities discussion of that joint meeting, everyone agreed that the school board would revisit the priority projects listing and update everything with the best and most current information. And considerable discussion took place that evening at that joint meeting, also specifically about CHS, but in the context of a bigger plan that would address the priorities as identified by this board. Following completion of the school board's review on the best available information and the school board's priority setting, the two boards were to come back together again and negotiate or talk about, you know, what the priorities that the school board saw, what the school board saw as being the priorities. So before Mr. Berenado speaks, I'd also like to share several pieces of information that I just have a need to restate because I think this school system is a school system that has seen some amazing, amazing things that we had to overcome in the last two and a half years. Both the school board and the Board of Supervisors have been presented with huge facility challenges. It started with the collapse of a BHS gymnasium. And if you just look at a collapse of a gymnasium, who would have ever thought that it would ripple through every single school and every single building operated by Montgomery County Public Schools and would have the impact on this school system and on this community that it has had? The board's year-end money and every other funding source was taxed by this chain of events. And I'll offer an example. In this, end of the school year 2010, we actually had almost $3 million, a little bit over $3 million of carryover money. And of that $3 million, some of it was to pay purchase orders that had just not cleared the process yet. But a big piece of it, $1 million, was used to support the relocation of BHS and BMS in the summer of 2010. $1 million would have gone a long way to address... A million dollars would have gone a long way to address some of the small projects that we have in Montgomery County Public Schools. But instead, we had to deal with the emergency situation as we should. In addition, even our carryover money was not enough to support the issues that we faced. And we had to go to the Board of Supervisors and request release of $2.5 million of the insurance money from the BHS gymnasium settlement to also offset the cost of alternative locations for all of our school programs. I think it's amazing that despite these issues, we have managed to accomplish many things with our facilities, including a comprehensive engineering review and responding to the recommendations from the review. All this while the economy tanked and money was in short supply. I would say that every one of our schools has needs, with the possible exception of our newest buildings. And if you talk to them, even they have things they'd like to have. Following the joint meeting with the Board of Supervisors on September 27, we started a course of action to strategically address and prioritize our facility needs. It was a comprehensive approach to facility needs that will net this community a far greater return on investment than dealing randomly with individual projects that may surface. A good plan is needed to guide our next facility projects. The school board and the Board of Supervisors have had success by working together with a strategic plan. Mr. Berenato, in his presentation tonight, will show you some of the results of working together with a strategic plan. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Dan. He's gonna do a couple of slides that are a status of some things that we've been doing. But he's gonna spend a little time just focusing again on some of the things that were shared with the supervisors and the school board on September 27. Dan?
Good evening. Thank you. First couple of slides are standard, things that we've been covering and tracking. The facility assessments, the final improvements to our final report there are being done and it's gonna be wrapped up soon, ready possibly in December. Building C, we're moving December 4th through 6th. And we've done a lot of work in Building C, getting it ready, both the Facilities Department, Technology Department, and our Purchasing Department. And that's gonna come upon us here in the next couple of weeks.
Would you just get a tiny bit closer to the mic?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
And as soon as we go, we'll begin to close up the school board office in Shawza Elementary School. And we continue to close old Blacksburg High School. In about three weeks, the chillers that are at Blacksburg High School and the cooling towers will be moved over to the new Blacksburg High School. And we'll be able to close another portion of Blacksburg High School. We were able to do the new school tours. Most of you got there, and a number of the supervisors as well, and I thought those went very well. The Kipps Fields restroom facility, the block walls of the building are up to the roof level and plumbing, mechanical, and electrical systems are being roughed in, and that continues. And as far as the Safe Routes to School Grant goes, the county planner is working on his grant proposal for application in early 2013. In light of the recent discussions at the Board of Supervisors meeting last week, we've prepared a brief overview of general facilities information, most of which you've seen before and as well as the supervisors and the public. Big picture, we do have quite a list of buildings. We have 40 separate buildings on 25 campuses, plus the mobile units. It's over 2 million square feet and we're gonna increase that with our new schools by almost 300,000 square feet. And we have 592 acres on these different campuses that we take care of. This is a large portfolio of properties to manage, so we conduct numerous maintenance, operational, and safety inspections. And we address issues identified in the inspections in a reasonable and prudent manner. Some inspections are by government officials, such as the fire marshal, the health department, the building official. Some are by our staff, preventive maintenance inspections and custodial inspections. Boilers are inspected through our insurance company. And some inspections are by contract services and consultants. Some inspections are yearly, some quarterly, and some as frequent as monthly. The inspections inform and guide our daily work, as well as the larger capital and capital maintenance project lists that we develop and execute. CHS was one of the Board of Supervisors' main topics of discussions and concern last week. We have been very aware of issues at Christiansburg High School. And in the meantime, until we get our CIP project funded there, we found ways to fund the replacement of parts of systems along the way. The current highest priority needs at CHS, as well as the other schools, are listed on our capital maintenance project list. The items below have been completed from previous versions of that list. As you, you can see quite a number of projects there. The first four were from our energy performance contract. They amounted to about a million and a half dollars. I've been informing you about the ADA work that we had ongoing the past year, the building code and structural improvements. We did the new main entrance sidewalks in 2009 and new front doors. We would have liked to have done all the sidewalks, but we had other work at, at other schools to do as well. So we tried to be judicious and share what wealth we had available at the time. As you know, we currently have the roof replacement project over a portion of the CTE wing going into design and will be constructed in the summer. We did pretty much things across the board, from the inside to the outside, from academics to training room, athletic training room work. And we even worked with Rotary Club of Christiansburg/Blacksburg when I was president a few years ago and got a new Christiansburg High School baseball scoreboard. All in all, amounted to about $2.8 million, just, most of it recently. The one item about two-thirds of the way down that doesn't have a price, it didn't have a price at print time, we had to look back in a few different records. But that new auditorium lighting and dimmer control systems that we did in 2003 were about $53,000. We've often shared information with the school board and Board of Supervisors for both our large capital improvements program needs, as well as our immediate capital maintenance needs. Those are basically system replacements that just should not wait for the CIP project. Most recently, these were discussed with the two boards at their joint meeting on September 27. The County Capital Improvements Program Project, Program. Those projects that list, we update yearly. I note that it was in 2003 when we submitted the project to recapitalize Christiansburg High School. At that time, the order of magnitude budget estimate was right around $19 million. The county has been carrying that on their unmet needs list in their program every year. And they have updated the cost with inflation, and it's currently on their plan at $36 million. The capital maintenance project list-
What does that mean to recapitalize CHS?
Basically, renew the building. So renew all the systems that wear out. Some systems have a 15-year life, some a 20-year, some a 25-year life. And they, just like us, our systems, we get old and, and they wear out. And they need to be rebuilt, basically. It means, it's another fancy term for rebuilt.
In other words, that's saying to us though, that that was on there since 2003, but we haven't really moved on that list?
No, we have had a number of projects, as you'll see-
Okay, sorry.
And have seen on our list that still remain.
But we publicize them each and every year, and they are provided to the county and they are provided, provided to the county management staff. So they are very well known. There's no secrets. These are well-known projects and well-known needs.
Also, in support of our budget each year, our operating budget, we develop a capital maintenance project list. And we do that yearly. We normally discuss it. We normally ask in the budget for about a million dollars if we can each year to start addressing these needs that come up because the larger projects aren't ready to be funded yet. And that list, this past year, this year's list amounted to about nine and three-quarter million dollars. And it covers almost every school in the division.
And this is where many of the small items that were discussed about Christiansburg High School, both at the joint meeting and then in the supervisors' meeting last week, are on this list that includes $9,765,000 worth of needs across our schools. And they're all, they're mostly small projects. They range from $60,000 to $130,000. But you put them all together and you've got almost a $10 million list.
And that's just the higher priority things. We don't go too far. We could do pages and pages of things. But we just try to focus on the highest priorities because we know we're not gonna get a $10 million shot in the arm, let alone a $20 million shot in the arm. But Ms. Blackburn's correct, the, the list of all the different projects that they discussed at the supervisors' meeting last week have been on that list for about three years. And, and that's where they got those projects. Which is, which is great. Someone's reading it. I thought it would be useful to review the major CIP projects discussed at the 20, meeting of the September 27. We've had a plan. We've completed a lot of it. And staff has begun the process of developing the information the board needs to prioritize the remaining and any new needs. We plan to present this, as discussed previously, in the late winter, early spring time. And as you could see, the projects cover the whole school division. We've really achieved a lot in the recent past through development of a strategic plan for capital improvements with established priorities. And although we can't get it all done at once, we've achieved great progress over a few short years.
Thank you Dan.
Board members, any comments or questions for Mr. Berenato or the superintendent?
I have some comments, not necessarily for Mr. Berenato or the superintendent. In my years on this board, we have tried to work very closely with the supervisors when it comes to our capital needs. And in 2006, we did some great work in coming up with a plan to build new schools on our side and the county, build the needs that they needed for the county. And then in 2008, the bottom fell out of everything and things came to a halt, a halt. Then we had a collapse in Blacksburg, which started moving things forward. Along with that, also came with a new, new guidelines for inspections of buildings, which increased our budget by a couple of million dollars. Those dollars that could have been spent to help take care of some of these small projects that we had in the district, because that was our plan. At the meeting in January and September on the 27th, I spoke extensively about the needs of Christiansburg High School and that it was about 40 years old and we needed to look at what we were gonna do there. But Christiansburg Elementary is the next critical project on, on the plan that was agreed to by the supervisors and this board. You know, it, it seems that the elementary schools sometimes get pushed aside when you talk about the high schools, because there's more activity, more things going on there. You see it. But in Christiansburg, the elementary schools are desperately overcrowded. They have the classrooms that have 20-plus students in the classrooms on a consistent basis. You know, no way am I gonna say, "Don't want that $400,000." But it's this board's responsibility to say where we're gonna spend that money. And when we left that meeting on the 27th, I asked that both the boards go back and look at what your needs are and that we come back together, as we did in 2006, and look at a plan and start the ball rolling. The other thing that both boards have agreed upon in the last couple of years, realizing we've got to have a better plan as to what, how we fund our capital projects in this county. And that's what we're working toward. And to quite frankly, have someone who's been involved in this governing process for less than a year run in and say, "Christiansburg High School is falling apart. You haven't done anything to keep that building up and you've got to do this, got to do that. You've got the money. You, you do it now." And I was totally shocked for a 7-0 vote from the Board of Supervisors to say, "Here, put all that money right there." You know, it's needed, it's been needed, we talked about it jointly, but there are other needs in the county. And quite frankly, Christiansburg Elementary, where those funds can be, be used also. We have got to do some feasibility studies to see exactly what's gonna happen with the elementary project, which is next. That takes dollars. We also have already talked about what we're gonna do, what we need to do to look at Christiansburg High School. Do we, you know, add on to that building, go in, revamp it? Or do we have enough land to rebuild? What are we gonna do? That was the conversation. I'm not so eager to throw money into a building that we may come back and say, "We're doing something totally different." And, you know, the auditorium seats are embarrassing. I've said that before. There needs to be some things done to make that building, you know, equitable while we're still there. Because it's gonna take many years before we have enough money to do anything with that building. Because there are other needs in the county that have been prioritized. I, I'm just very, very, put it nicely, annoyed that the school board was not even asked, not even told, "We've got some money here. This is what we'd like to do with it. What do you all think? What are your priorities with that?" We, we, it was just, you know- We, it was just, you know, we're going to, this is what we're going to do. You know, I've made it clear. I feel that on many occasions, the board of supervisors try to overstep the school board in what they do as far as when they allocate money, how they allocate money. And I don't like it. I'd love to tell them how to spend some of their money. And we try when we put our budget forth, but we don't get it. You know, they've helped us tremendously. But let me tell them how to give us our money. And, you know, we'll take more. But just give it to us, and we know what to do with it. We know what we need and when we need it. I'm just, I could go on and on, but it's the same story. Let us run the schools, give us the money, we'll do what we need to do. Because as Mr. Barronato said, we have many buildings that have needs. And we need to prioritize and look at each need carefully to make sure we're spending that money as frugally as we possibly can. Because throwing a lot of money into Christiansburg High School that has many needs and then come back in a year or so and say, "No, we feel like we need to do a new building." I just have some concerns about that. And remember, the little kids need to be taken care of, too.
Any other board members, comments, questions? Board members?
Do you want us to weigh in the agenda when we're talking about?
Yeah, I'm going to save my comments for when we get to the resolution part on the new business. But I agree with everything that Ms. Franklin just said.
I agree, too.
Don't disagree with any of them.
Yeah, I just have to say that Virginia is very unusual, I guess. I think other states do have one body with the financing and another body deciding over the educational system. But it had been my understanding, as we've been evolving, since I've been on the board, that we would meet and discuss and talk, and that it was really the school board's decision as to how money is spent. I think that's how we ultimately have ended up over the last couple of years. So I was a little surprised as well. And I'm hoping we can work through this and do what's really the very best for all the children in the system. And I do understand Dan's reporting continuously and their dealing. I appreciate it with safety issues, and I thank you for that, Dan. And I'm hoping we can move on together for the sake of our kids as a community. Montgomery County.
Any other comments or questions about the facilities update? Hearing none, next item on our agenda is unfinished business. Does any board member have any unfinished business they would like to bring before the board at this time? Thank you, Dan. Hearing none, we'll move to new business. Is there any items of new business that the school board members would like to bring before the board at this time? We have one item of interest, and that is that we received a resolution based on the action from the board of supervisors meeting last Wednesday evening. And that resolution regarding, and I believe that you have a copy of that resolution. And I believe at this time, I'm going to ask Mr. Keen just to, I know that he wanted to exercise himself there. Provide any guidance, talk to this board based on what we have received and how the resolution is set up. Make sure that we're headed down the right path.
Any questions?
I learned of this, as you all did when we were in Williamsburg, very informally, and did not see the resolution until tonight. I say that only because I have not gone back to explore the board of supervisors authority to do this. So I'd rather not comment specifically on the language in the resolution. But I will take a big step backwards, which may be helpful. In my experience doing school law for nearly twenty years, there are, I guess, three budgets that we normally speak about. The annual operating budget, the capital improvement budget. And part and parcel of the operating budget is the food services budget, which doesn't come into play here. I think that this is quintessentially a political question. And I don't mean, a political question, I don't mean that pejoratively. I don't think that this requires legal analysis, as a speaker said and as one of your colleagues has said already. You're sort of loathe to say no to new money that you didn't otherwise have. I also would echo what has been characterized, that the Constitution of Virginia is very clear that school boards run schools. But you can't run schools if you don't have money. And so I believe at a very general level that this comes down to a communications question between this board and the other board. And let me give you an example. You know that under your operating budget, the board of supervisors can elect to appropriate by lump sum or by category. And once the appropriation is made in either scenario, it does not enjoy veto power over how you all spend the money. But none of you was born yesterday, and you know, for instance, I'll speak very pejoratively, just by way of dramatic example. If there were an administrator that the board of supervisors didn't care for, they could very quickly look at your budget and learn what that administrator makes and fail to appropriate money in that exact dollar amount. It could not tell you not to employ that administrator, but it could do through the back door what it can't do through the front door. I would suggest the same thing is sort of true here. You have a maintenance category in your operating budget. Some of this money could be, for instance, I believe, without doing any research, allocated in a way so that it was in your operating budget. But I think once you get beyond a certain scale, that money traditionally has been appropriated through your capital maintenance budget or your capital improvements budget, which has been the result of the dialogue that Ms. Franklin has described over time. So I don't have a good answer for you. If you were building a new school, building a new addition, I think what you would be doing is going to a lender. And if you were getting, if you were selling bonds to get that done, for instance, or if you were borrowing more money with the support of the county's credit, then the county has to be involved in that. The board of supervisors has to sign off on those resolutions. I don't, I don't believe it's wise, nor do I believe it's even permissible for you all to engage in, for this board to undertake projects without having a conversation with the board. And we're sort of on the other side of that. That, as I've heard it described, you all had no prior knowledge to this resolution. It just landed here. I would suggest that maybe one way to get at this is to consider having your chair and your superintendent go back and have a direct dialogue about the discomfort that this board is experiencing right now. You know that I have a, I think, a very good working relationship with your county attorney. He and I have not talked about this at all. If you'd like me to, I could pose some questions to him. But I don't, I don't know that I've clarified anything except to echo what you all have already said. It seems to me that one way to get at it would be to go back and say, "May we reopen this and view it in the context of the priorities that we talked about at our September meeting?"
Right.
And see if that invitation would even be received favorably by the board of supervisors.
Okay.
I imagine that the message is getting to them, at least by tomorrow morning, informally, if not formally. I don't know, again, I don't know that I've answered any questions, but I-
Help me, I don't know about the rest of the board members, but I just wanted to make sure where we stood from, since we had received, since this was voted on, discussed in public, voted on in public by the funding body. And the way the resolution reads, that this money is allocated specifically to the Christiansburg project. You know, what are we bound to do with this? And, you know, we don't want to turn away money, absolutely not. But I think I agree with you. We need to step back and say, "Thanks, but let's talk about how we spend it." And that's where I'm kind of headed with it, which we've already done, but we'll do it again.
I guess this was new to me, in this format of a resolution. And you explained to me that this, because I watched the entire meeting, and it showed that it was a motion that supervisor did. And so I guess this is how they present information to our board always, is with a resolution.
We have received resolutions from them before when they passed a motion, okay, impacting us. For example, when the BHS, some of the things that we dealt with, with BHS, came back to us as a resolution from them about supporting replacement of this school and, you know, so forth and so on.
Madam Superintendent, if I could, I should be more expert in this than I am. But for instance, your board of supervisors has the authority to pass local, what would be considered local law by ordinances. And there are restrictions and parameters under which they may act that way. A resolution, I think, is a documentation of a motion that's been made and that presumes that they had the authority to appropriate the money and set it aside as they have. What I'm telling you is I've not researched that. I presume that they can. And I just don't know what the source of this money is, how it fits into the overall county budget, and how it would appear as a quote-unquote supplemental appropriation to you all, whether it would be part of the operating budget or part of the capital improvements budget. That's, those are the pieces I have not researched. I'm glad to talk to the county attorney about that, if you'd like me to. But again, that might be subordinate to your all's conversation with them about, yes, we'd like it, but how does this fit into the overall picture?
Board members, any comments or questions for Mr. Keen?
Well, my comments are simply to echo what Ms. Franklin said. We have a list. I've been now finishing up nine years, and the process has been is that all the communication and all the joint meetings, the work behind the scenes between the county manager and the superintendent during that time, all lead us to a joint decision about how the money is appropriated and how the money is spent. And while I'm, you know, if they, if the board of supervisors is willing to give us four hundred thousand dollars, I'm certainly not going to say no to that. But I do want the ability, as we have in the past, to decide how we're going to use that money. And I agree with Ms. Franklin. We have a very serious need in the Christiansburg Elementary strand. It is unbelievable when you visit those facilities over there and think that we're trying to educate small children in those facilities in the manner that they're being educated. I guess the most disappointing thing that I saw was it was characterized as safety issues.
Yes.
And these are not safety, we have addressed the safety issues. We have spent millions of dollars since the collapse of that roof in Blacksburg on making sure that every building that a student walks in is safe. Does it look aesthetically pleasing? Maybe probably not in every school. But when that child walks in that school, it's a safe school. Not only is it a safe school, it's a clean school. It's a very clean school. Which contributes to the safety of the building and the overall aesthetics of our buildings. But we, if we have a safety issue, we address it. And we attack it, this administration, this superintendent, attack it with the best possible resources that they have. I would love to be able to fix all the sidewalks and replace all the seats and do all the things that may need to be done. But those kind of things exist in all of our schools in the county. So while I'm appreciative of the board of supervisors being willing to allocate funds to help us with capital improvement, I want the ability of this board to say, "This is how we are going to spend it." And we do that in a joint way, which was the discussions we had at the joint meeting when we left there. We have, we're going to ask for money for studies for Christiansburg Elementary, and we're going to ask for monies for studies for Christiansburg High School. Because where is the land going to come from? Are we landlocked at Christiansburg High School? Can we expand? And there was a comment made about the softball team at Christiansburg High School not having a place to play. This board has talked about that on numerous occasions. It is on our radar. We know that the Christiansburg High School girls softball team does not have a home. We know that. And we repeatedly have been asking about that. So again, I think as we certainly can move forward, because I do believe that these board members have their hearts and their minds in the right places trying to help us. I do think that we will look at this resolution, and we are appreciative of it. But we are going to spend our capital funds how we want to spend our capital funds, and we're going to do it in a joint manner. We may not all agree, never, and there's been past where we haven't all agreed, but we have moved forward and we will spend it in the appropriate way and on the right things.
Any other comments? I'm like, Ms. Franklin, I could go on for a long time here.
Well, I got to come back, because that softball field, you know, I've been talking with the superintendent for probably the last eighteen months about that, to the point where it needed to come to the board level to be looked at further when it realized, you know, "Well, no, this is what they've got, and going to have to keep it." And that wasn't, that wasn't sufficient for me. I have repeatedly said that we need to be treating the young ladies in Montgomery County schools who are involved in athletics the same as we treat the young men, and that it's not acceptable for them not to have playing fields or courts or whatever they need to be able to participate in what they want to participate in. Again, at Christiansburg, we don't exactly know what's going to happen there. We have seen information where, yeah, we could put a field over here, but we also had the information that when it came to the baseball field, there was no consideration made that we need to also look at what we're going to do with the softball field for the girls, who just got a baseball field. That's what we need. So don't keep looking at this board as we're not doing what we're supposed to do, because there were decisions made there that excluded that softball field long before we even knew we were even a part of this decision-making. It just, it just really burns me how the conversation around the town has been, "This board is neglecting Christiansburg." And that is not true. We would be much further along if we hadn't had the unfortunate, because it, there was no, there were no lives lost, no major injuries with that collapse in Blacksburg. We had facilities to put students in. But it was a huge, and will be a huge, financial impact on this county for a long time. And many other projects are having to wait. I'm just very, very annoyed.
Any other final comments?
I would just like to say that I would, I wanted to see this money go for something, if it's Christiansburg High School, if it's Christiansburg Elementary School, other than an animal shelter. Because that was on the table. And sometimes, if it has to be driven into a different direction to get it, sometimes that's what we have to do.
I'm not sure.
Okay.
Yeah, no, 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 the way this was done, the way this was done was absolutely wrong.
But it's, it's like I said, if that, if we didn't get that money, it might have gone somewhere else.
Well, if we had been informed that there was, there were monies out there, then maybe we could have stepped it up to say, "Hey, you know, here."
Exactly.
But to, for folks to imply they didn't know when they were given the information, we talked about the information.
That's wrong, right.
That's wrong.
That's wrong, that's right.
And to give the impression that this board is not being responsible.
Oh, I agree.
Having children go into a facility that was unsafe, I'm not going to stand for it.
I agree, I agree one hundred percent with that, but talking about the money. I believe we are going to get an animal shelter.
Yeah, that's already been done.
It's been determined, yeah. Oh, I know that.
Okay, just clarifying.
There was a conversation about more going to the animal shelter.
Well, the point is-
Well, the point is, we need dialogue, we need that.
When does your next leadership meeting occur with?
It's the first Wednesday in December, I believe. First Thursday in December.
I think it's the fifth or sixth Thursday we meet, we meet the first Thursday. You know, we'll work it out.
Okay.
We're going to, we're going, we've met more difficult challenges than this, we'll work through this.
And I'll move to announcements and information. Any announcements and information by school board members?
Yes, I really appreciated the walkthroughs that Dan and other people helped us experience going through the new Auburn High School and Blacksburg High School. I really appreciated it. And this morning, it was a pleasure, a deep pleasure to be at Blacksburg High School with all of our amazing young people that had gathered over 300 boxes of food for our poor in our community in the county. And I know I'd been there several years going, it's double the amount. And I really applaud all of our young people and the care they have in so many dimensions in our schools today. We see it a lot in the newspapers, we hear about it. And I thank our, our teachers, our staff, everyone that's making this happen to help our young people evolve into really caring, creative, committed kids. It's really awesome this morning to see the excitement and the commitment on the part of the Blacksburg High Kids. It was awesome.
I have one. On February the 23rd, the Black Awareness Club at Christiansburg High School, along with the community group here in Christiansburg, will be sponsoring our third annual Black History Quiz Bowl. So if you, we had a wonderful time last year. So at all your middle schools and all the high schools, the information, if it has, if it's not already there, it should be there the next day or so for teams to get organized, registered and get the list of thousands-plus questions, close to 2,000 questions that they will need to study to be prepared. So we're looking forward to this and there's some nice monetary prizes for those first three teams.
Well?
Sorry. I'd just like to say congrats to Auburn's girls volleyball team for winning state and Christiansburg's cross-country team for winning state as well.
Yep, Blacksburg High School boys and girls both had their state championship cross-country.
Yay.
So we've got several state championship recognitions coming up. And again, congratulations to Auburn, I actually was there Friday afternoon and watched the game. And, you know, I've had to follow volleyball that closely until this year and it's, it's fun to, it's just absolutely fun to watch, it really is, it's amazing.
I'll just say ahead of time that Christiansburg is heading for another state championship game. We've just got one more to get through.
You've got one more now.
We'll make it.
And I'd also like to thank everybody, everybody who's making this school system happen. As Thanksgiving comes along, I'm really thankful and grateful for everybody, everybody in this school system that's making it happen for our young people because they're the future and I thank you.
And not to cast any kind of a downer on the proceedings, but I do think it's worthy to note that we did lose a pillar in our community this week and Doug Day Senior passed away. And that we should keep the family of Doug Day Senior in our thoughts and prayers. Any other announcements or information?
Just wish everyone a less Thanksgiving.
Yes.
And let's be thankful for what we have and pray for everything else we may receive.
Well said. Next item on the agenda is agenda preparation and you see that we will meet on December the 4th and on December the 18th. And with that, I ask for a motion for adjournment.
So move.
All those in favor signify by saying aye please. Aye. Any opposed? We're now adjourned. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Sometimes we didn't do that first Christmas, that one night before Christmas.